Good evening. I'd like to call to order the city council meeting of Monday, February 5th, 2018. And we will start with a prayer from Pastor Hank Russell.
If you would join me, please. Our heavenly fathers, we gather here this evening, we are so grateful for the kindness you show to us in this fine community. Lord, we are so blessed with gifts, and we take so many for granted. But God, you've been good to us and blessing us with gifts under heaven and every gift in heaven, Lord. The love and the laughter that we share, Lord, even the difficulties come disguised as things that help us grow and become stronger and more like you. Thank you for each one that's here, Lord. They're here on such a cold night, and it's a sacrifice of time. They invest in our community. Thank you for each one here. I pray that you'd compensate them, Lord, with treasures from heaven. Be with their families and help them, Lord God, in every way. We think on a frosty night like tonight, our first responders who are protecting us, those guardians that watch over us, cold night like tonight, they have to do what they're called to do, no matter what the weather's like. We pray that you keep them safe, keep your hand upon them, touch their families, Lord, bless them for their part of this community. We thank you for other gifts like wisdom and insight, Lord. Pray that that would flow freely here tonight, as you say in your word, to ask, any of us would ask for wisdom, you'd give it to us. We thank you for the commitment and the selflessness here, Lord. And, Lord, we thank you for spirit of unity. In all these things, we give you thanks. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
All right, rule call, please.
Okay.
Albertson?
Here.
Okay. Bueller? Absent. Danforth?
Here.
Lalum?
Here.
Manti?
Here.
Robie?
Here.
Solom?
Here.
Thorson?
Here.
Vilhauer?
Here.
Why?
Present.
Thank you. All right. The first item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda. Is there a motion? Moved by Solomon, second by Why? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Sorry. Excuse me.
I did have a question. Kristen, aye, is that primarily for background checks for prospective employees? Is that what?
That is correct.
Let's try that again. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number two is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion? Motion by Vilhauer? Second by Robie. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number three is application for a temporary location transfer and return of a retail on-sale liquor license owned by Zeus Inc. doing business as Second Street Station as follows. A for the period of 5:00 PM, February 16, 2018, to 2:00 AM, February 17, 2018, from 15, Second Street Southwest, to 1910 West Kemp. And there's a public hearing and council action for that, and then I'll move on. After we do that, to the period after 2:01 AM, February 17, from 1910 West Kemp, back to 15, Second Street Southwest. So, starting with A to move it over to 1910 West Kemp, I will look for a motion and second, and then open the public hearing.
So, second.
Moved by Manti, second by Lalum. And the public hearing is open. Is there anyone in the audience to speak about this? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Is there any discussion?
There.
Councilman Vilhauer?
I apologize. I got asked this question. Every time this comes up, I'm always confused. Okay, we're transferring it from one location to another, but yet, in this case, Second Street Stations, they're still allowed to sell during that time when it's been transferred. Is that a fair statement?
I don't think so. No, I don't think they can, no, they can't sell liquor during that time.
Okay, so there's nothing that is, I mean, that would make sense, but it seemed like in the past when I've asked that question, there were still exceptions whereby the transfer, the transferor was still allowed to sell something during that time. Okay, if I'm mistaken, that-
Was it a malt liquor versus a full liquor license? Malt beverage, malt liquor beverage?
If they have the malt beverage, which I can't say that they do, they would still be allowed to sell malt beverage at that location. But this is to move the liquor portion.
Good question. Councilman Robie?
Just let the record reflect. I'll recuse myself from this item. Thank you.
This is for the pro pheasants banquet, by the way. Any other comments? Seeing none, I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Okay. B, this is moving it back for the period after 2:01 AM, February 17, 2018, from 1910 West Kemp to 15, Second Street Southwest. I will open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak about this. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask for motion and second. I don't think I got that yet.
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Motion by Lalum, second by Thorson. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number four is resolution of necessity for Third Avenue Southwest Reconstruction Project Number 1806, Resolution Number 18-03. I'll look for a motion and second for approval, and then open the public hearing. Moved by Danforth?
Second.
Second by Lalum. Okay, the public hearing is open. Is there anyone in the audience to speak about this? Seeing none. Shane, would you like to tell us about this project?
Okay. This is an interesting result. I haven't heard from any individuals along this route either. So, I'll quick do the summary, and then we'll discuss the potential for assessments or not. The base project is to reconstruct Third Avenue Southwest from 13th Street Southwest to 18th Street Southwest. If you recognize, this is the back entrance to the Cook Complex. And the football field stadium is to the north here. There are nine properties along the north side of Third Avenue which do not currently have curb and gutter across the properties. We sent a letter out to property owners that looked like this with, on letterhead. It described what lot they owned, what their frontage was, you know, 16, in this case, it was 69.7 feet, the estimated cost, so this one was $2,091. We sent that type of information to all nine property owners. I only received one phone call that I'm aware of. I do, in honesty, have a couple of phone calls I haven't checked from late last week, but I will get to those. In essence, I've gotten zero feedback. The only one that called me was an individual that may be interested in putting in curb and gutter on his own if this fails. So, we have before us a resolution of necessity. I have no idea if anybody's opposed to the project, and I have no idea how much support I have for the project.
Once they find out they're getting an assessment, you will hear from them.
Well, that's, this is what this letter indicated, is that we desire to do that. And I heard nothing, which is kind of ironic. The other projects that we talked about assessments on, I had people come in, I had people phone call me, I had all kinds of feedback. On this one, I have had absolutely nothing, and it's-
Which could mean that they're okay with it.
Right.
Or it could mean that they don't understand it.
Right.
So, if this is approved, we'll move forward with an assessment project, and then there will be another public hearing?
What we would do is go forward, get bids, as if everybody, including all the curb and gutter, then we can reconsider the assessments upon receiving bids. If the bids come in way high, and we get a bunch of opposition, would be one way to do it. You know, and then what I was proposing to do if we do this, if we go forward, I'm going to do the curb as a alternate bid on the tab, then we can approve it or disapprove it, and move on.
Okay, so if we move forward, and it truly is that people are favorable to doing this, we'll have a nice new road with curb and gutter. And property owners will be assessed for the curb where they don't have curb. Any property owner that has curb will not receive an assessment. And that's how we can move forward with a yes vote on the resolution of necessity. If we move forward, and then people come out at the time that the bids are being proposed, and you have it as an alternate, that gives us an out, so that we could do the project, we're going to do the project on the road.
Correct.
There's no assessment for the road. It's only filling in the curb and gutter and the gaps. Everybody understand? Councilman Robie?
Two points. One, that'll be assessed over 10 years, correct?
They have the option of assessing it, or putting it on their tax roll over a period of time with interest, or they can pay it off 100% whenever they wish.
The second point is, those that already have curb and gutter, they've already paid for that.
Correct.
No assessment.
They're not part of the assessment portion of the project.
Okay, but in the past, when it went in, they were assessed at that time.
Yep.
So, existing curb and gutter was assessed and paid for by the landowners.
Correct.
We wouldn't put curb in. It wouldn't be that, we just wouldn't assess for it. We would do the project without filling in the gaps. Councilman Danforth?
Shane, you mentioned the north side. What about the south side?
South side curb is intact.
It's all in place?
Yep. We'll just do some spot repairs at no cost to the property owners.
Okay. And did we, didn't we have discussion on sidewalks? Is that in or out of this?
Sidewalks are not included in the project.
Sidewalks would have brought properties into non-compliance.
Right.
Non-conformance with setbacks, if we did that. Because we'd have to get right away, or we could put it in easements. It's property acquisition, there's negotiations. We didn't go down that path. Any other questions or comments? Councilman Solomon?
Shane, do you know 18th Street Southwest, where it turns south, does that all have curb and gutter also?
Yes.
Does it even have curb and gutter on the stretch there that's owned by the city, where the back area of the park softball complex is?
I believe it does. Let's take a peek. There's curb all the way to here. This portion does not. We can include that in the project?
Well, I don't think that's city property there. I would think if we're going to do it all the way down, we might as well go all the way around the corner.
You betcha. We can do that. The question might be, Councilman Solomon, whether we're going to end the project right here and not, we're not planning on including 18th Street, but we could certainly expand the project to include curb here. Right now, we're planning on stopping the project right here.
Well, I think while we're there, we're making everybody else put in curb, we might as well finish it.
For what little is there? I think it represents a good, good movement on our part.
We can certainly look at that. I wouldn't propose to replace all the pavement if it's not necessary, but we can look at the curb. I'll do an order.
Any other comments?
We'll get one more bite at this apple when we see the real numbers.
Yes. If we do the option without curb and gutter, then there will be no assessment. So, that'll have to be bid out as an alternate. Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
You need to make a motion first?
Oh, didn't I get a motion?
The motion needs to include finishing that.
You have the motion, you have to close the hearings.
Oh, I'll close the public hearing.
We do?
I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. No, that's not going to be assessed. We'll just pay for that out of our pocket. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Item number five is the mayor's state of the city address. Pete, could you give me the clicker and, please? Dead battery?
No.
All right. Can I get the PowerPoint on with this? Oh, okay. It's down on the P on the bottom. There you go. Thank you. Okay. So, I, oh. Technical issues. That always happens. Okay. Doesn't appear to be working. The mouse. I think I did that last time, too. Here we go. There we go. Okay. 2017 was a busy year, and we had a lot of new things opening, which were really nice for our community. I don't need to dwell on these, but starting with Hobby Lobby at the beginning of the year, the Wellness Center, we had the big 4th of July fireworks celebration that got us nationwide attention. We're planning to do that again this year. The opening of our premier softball complex, the Odyssey Theater Skate Park, we achieved 10,000 enplanements at the airport, and we rehabilitated 29th Street Southeast, which actually is the beginning of the 2012 project, and I'll explain that in a little bit. Our budget versus our actual revenues and expenditures were very close to being on track, and Kristen's working really hard putting together the CAFO, and that's the annual financial report that we do to show how we did for the year. But it was pretty close to being right on track, so that's good. Sales tax revenues were up for the year, 2.84% for our own city taxes. The taxes collected in Watertown for the state were only up .7%. So, we're taxing a little bit differently than the state is. Also, our BBB, bed, booze, and board tax, that was up over 8%. So, that's really a good thing. That's a trend. The first half of 2017 was pretty flat, and the second half of 2017 was actually our city tax revenues were up like four, over 4%. So, over the whole year, it averaged out to 2.84%. And I take that as a very good sign and a positive trend. Building permits were about the same in 2017 compared to 2016. We had 650 permits issued. 100 of those were industrial or commercial, and the rest were all residential. And the vast majority were actually remodels. So, that includes new construction as well as remodels. We did have a couple of new annexations and some subdivisions going on, so that's also very good, because that means we're set for new development. We've got land available for building, which is very good. I'm not going to read all these new faces. Some of them are in this room. We've got a new mayor, of course, a couple new council people, new Watertown Development Company Director, new finance officer, new attorney, lots of new faces in Watertown School District, the Mount Marty College, urban renewal boards all new. We got lots of new faces, so a lot of new things going on. These general goals, you'll probably recognize from my promises that I've made, to have a quality of life management strategy, affordable housing framework, city organization optimization, and economic health program, and to report back to the community periodically. So, this is my second report back. More technical difficulties. Ah, here we go. In the quality of life management strategy, we have lifestyle projects, and we've done a bunch of those in our community. We're enjoying the benefits of those. I believe that's why our tax revenues are on the way up, because we're having tournaments here. Those tournaments bring people to our community. They buy food here, they stay in our hotels, they buy gas. It's good. So, we have a couple of more projects that are underway. The Ice Arena project is under design at the location across from the softball complex. The city had hired an architect to design it there. When I became mayor, I said, you know, let's make sure we're picking the right location. And we've gone through the iterations and still think this is our location. The mall has approached the city and asked us to put the Ice Arena there. And just to let you know where that's sitting right now, we have asked the mall to tell us explicitly, apples to apples, show us a plan that's as far along as our plan by an architect, so that we can do a cost estimate and compare it to the cost estimate that we currently have across from the softball complex. We're not going to stop our project until we see that we actually have a contending project. Putting the Ice Arena at the mall is appealing, because it would require a rejuvenation of the mall, and we'd see, you know, we'd see that facility from the highway, which has a lot of traffic. So, that would probably make it marketable for sponsorships, more so than any other location. But we need to know how much it's going to cost to build in that location, because it might be more. We don't know yet. The gun range, we heard about that earlier, and that's moving along as well. Hope to build that this year and get it done. The Ice Arena, if we start it this year, we expect to start it, but we certainly do not expect to finish it this year. We're underway with our Lake Campesca Master Plan, which includes the H2020 priorities that were done, along with water quality and a bunch of other things. So, that's a real exciting project. We're also underway with a downtown streetscape and two-way streets project. The bike trail completion around the lake is currently in the hands of an engineering firm to give us a detailed plan and cost estimate. So, we're looking forward to finishing the plan this year, not actually constructing the whole trail, but we might get some of it built. Affordable housing framework, I have several committees working on this. The Development Committee is currently looking at our development standards. We're going through that chapter by chapter with the hope of bringing, by the end of the year, a proposed development standard book for the council to adopt. We refer to it in our ordinance, as though it exists. And it doesn't really exist yet, so hopefully by the end of the year, it will. And the Development Committee is helping to look at reasonable standards that aren't too expensive, and will be helping to do development in a smooth way. Housing Committee is looking at a number of different things. I've got volunteers putting together a brochure of financing opportunities for people who are wanting to build affordable homes, and that being bank programs and that sort of thing. We're also looking at some new affordable neighborhoods that we might be able to sponsor as a city, and rehabilitating house by house within our community. And I hope to bring plans for both of those to the council for consideration this year. City organization optimization, I've got a couple of departments that I'm really focusing in on. One is engineering, and the other is the parks, recreation, and forestry. I think there are opportunities there for making some changes that will help us be more efficient. So, those are both good. We have all these new recreation facilities, and I think it's a good time to look at the way we're managing them and make sure that we're getting the most bang for our buck. Communication strategy is something that I've been working on, and if you watch the council meetings, you've noticed it. We now have reinstated our Public Works and Finance Committees, where we have minutes taken and actual action taken, which gives direction to the staff. So, I think that's a good thing. The meeting structure, where we use Robert's Rules, and people ask for the floor and talk one at a time, I think that's been a positive change as well. And I'm instigating, this month, I've been talking about this for the entire time I've been mayor, and I haven't started it till now, but Friday will be my first coffee with the mayor. Once a month, at a coffee shop somewhere, the first one will be at Gather this Friday at 2:00 for an hour or so, just to open a floor for the public to come and ask questions or just listen. But it gives people a chance to come and talk to me and not have to make an appointment to have a meeting with me. So, I'm looking forward to that. And we've started enforcing the ordinances, and I expect that, not that we didn't enforce them, we enforced most of our ordinances in the past, but there were a few that were troublesome, and so we just kind of looked the other way. And people felt that the ordinances were maybe not enforceable, and that's why we looked the other way. The way I feel about that is, if it's not enforceable, let's take it off the books. But we won't know if it's enforceable or not if we don't try to enforce it. So, we are, we've made some changes in how we enforce the sign code. We haven't changed the sign code in allowing signs in the right of way. We've always had a provision in there that prohibited signs in the right of way. Now, we're enforcing it. And we have had a little bit of pushback on that, so we might be changing that ordinance if it isn't working out. We're also looking at the outside storage, and we've been enforcing that as well. The economic health program includes staying on budget, having a reasonable budget, and sticking to it. And not that we haven't done that in the past, but I think we've always done a really good job of that, and I want to continue that and keep tabs on where we are. And sales tax, as I said before, we're doing very well at the moment, and I'm expecting a big year for construction this year, which will have a positive effect on the sales tax revenue. So, I think this is going to be a good year for sales tax. Also, I expect it to be a good year for building permits. Time will tell, but with the available land for developing, I think we're on the right track. So, we are doing very well. We're holding our own in this time of gnashing teeth, where most communities are faced with declining revenues due to people shopping online. That's certainly an issue here. We want people to shop local, and so far, Watertown folks have been faithful in shopping in our stores, and we hope that continues. So, I'm giving you my address here. I'm a planner at heart, and I like to see planning in every aspect of what we do as a city organization. So, we're planning for the future always with all of our projects. I love that. The Lake Campesca Master Plan should be a wonderful document. There are lots of people that have stepped up to the plate and volunteered to help with this. That really makes me happy. The downtown streetscape will be a plan that's completed within a few months here. It will give us a document showing us projects that we can do in our downtown, along with cost estimates and priorities on where we could get the most bang for our buck. And hopefully, before budget time, we'll be able to have that in hand and maybe bring some projects forward in our budget. And we're also going to adopt a new comprehensive plan for our community this year. We've done updates in the past where we just- updates in the past where we just have a little update document that we adopt. This is going to be a whole new book. So that'll be great. And the Highway 212 reconstruction, that's a long-term project that's been underway. It started with the reconstruction of the intersection of Highway 212 and Highway 81, which used to be the highest accident intersection in our state, and now it's much better. We start with those danger points. And the next step is to take big stretches. We'll be taking the stretch from Highway 20 to Highway 81 in 2019, and then in 2021, we'll be going from Highway 81 to 19th Street East. Now, those are state projects. They're not city projects, but this is our community. The highway cuts right through the heart of our town, and these projects have a big effect on us. And we're hoping that the businesses along those stretches will come out, and they'll be affected, and we want to help them in any way that we can. But we also have been planning for this for many, many years. And we have a bypass truck route that was constructed, the southerly access route, which starts at 29th Street, east goes south to 20th Avenue South, and continues past Highway 81, and comes out up on, at the intersection of Highway 20 and Highway 212. We aren't fully utilizing that bypass route, because the intersection of Highway 81 and 20th Avenue South is dangerous. So the state has been reluctant to label that as a truck route, and encourage trucks to actually take it until we fix that. Well, that's going to be fixed this summer. That's the Highway 81 Roundabout, which will start as soon as the ground's ready, and will be finished before school starts. And as I said, that we started the 29th Street, that got us prepared to take the extra traffic. Once those two things are done, we will be able to safely have bypass around Highway 212, so that we can reconstruct those stretches. And we really couldn't reconstruct Highway 212 until those projects were done. So that's a really good thing. And what's ahead? We have a full plate of city projects for this year, with the most prominent being our road reconstruction projects, and numerous other projects which were included in the budget. Of course, the highway roundabout is going to be disruptive, and that'll be a big project for our community as well. I expect to see lots of development in our Gateway Overlay District, which is the area that we've been looking at changing the standards, and hoping to see some movement there. So all in all, this has been a really great start to our 2018, and I'm expecting continuance of that trend. And I would like to thank everyone who is helping along the way. There's so many people that have stepped forward to volunteer, to participate in all the different ways, different committees, and just helping all the new faces get their feet wet, and get grounded, and I think we're really off to a great start. So there you have it. So, moving right along, item number six is request by Chamber of Commerce to allow for alcohol consumption in the Highland Room of the Park and Rec Fieldhouse on February 6, 2018. Do I need a motion for this? Okay, I'll look for a motion, second for approval, and then Matt's going to tell us about it. Moved by Albertson, second by Vilhauer. Okay, Matt?
Thank you, Mayor. As everybody knows, the farm show starts this week. The Chamber of Commerce had contacted us requesting permission to allow the consumption of some distilled spirits in this Highland Room of the Fieldhouse. There's a mixology class that's going to be taking place. It's actually tomorrow. And state law does allow the governing body, which is you guys, to permit the consumption of alcoholic beverages in a public facility for a period of 24 hours. And so that's what the request is. And Tim's here, I see, if you guys have any questions.
Another new face, the new Chamber of Commerce Director, Tim Sheehan.
Good evening. I'm Tim Sheehan here, on behalf of the Chamber. What we've got in front of us is, we've put 13 different classes, new classes, at the farm show. And one of those is to offer a local mixologist to demonstrate and share about three or four different types of drinks in a one-hour period. Start at 1:30, it'll be over by 12:30. We have about 25 chairs in that room, in the facility, so it's not like we're going to be having a party, and it's more of just sampling some newer drinks that might be on the, I shouldn't say on the market, but that are out there to the public. So that's kind of the goal, and the reason that we're here asking for that, for that request.
Any questions or comments? Councilman Y?
Is this something, Tim, that they preregister for? Do they pay to get into it? Do they just walk in?
Nope. It'll just be open to the public, and we'll have, like I said, we've only got 24 chairs in that room, so when it's full, it's, we may have some standing room only, but I don't expect to be that big of a deal.
Oh, sorry, Councilman Roby?
Matt, just confirm with me. We're not, there's no sale of alcohol here, so I assume that has something to do with it.
Correct.
But there's no issue with transferring licenses, because there's no sale.
Correct.
Taking place.
Correct. Good question. Any other questions or comments? Councilman Albertson, or you just getting ready to vote?
No.
He RSVP'd for the first season.
Oh, yeah. All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries.
Great, thank you.
Item number seven is consideration of bids received for the wastewater department. And we will take these one by one. I'll ask for a motion. We'll let Mike talk, and then we'll take action. So the first one is the jetter truck. Is there a motion, second for approval? Moved by Solomon, second by Manti. Okay, go ahead, Mike.
Okay. As you see in the bid tab, there were four bids received for the sewer jetter truck. The low bid does meet the specifications, is from Elliot Sanitation Equipment of Grimes, Iowa, in the amount of $376,490, less $175,000 trading, for a net bid amount of $201,490. So we'd recommend awarding this to Elliot Sanitation, in the net bid amount with trade-in of $201,490. And again, the unit that we, they bid here is the new version of the camel jetter that we are trading in. So it's a product that they've serviced in the past for us, and that we are currently operating. And the vendor had informed us that they have the trade-in pre-sold, so that's how they came up with this significant trade-in value.
Great. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll ask for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Okay, look for a motion for approval of the bid for portable sewer steamer.
Second.
By Albertson, second by Lalum. Okay, Mike?
One bid was received here for the portable steamer. The sole bid does meet the specifications. It is from Technology International Incorporated of Lake Mary, Florida. We did have a second bid, but it came a day late, so we could not open it or consider it. We'd like to recommend awarding this bid to Technology International, in the amount of $76,720.
Any questions or comments?
Comment, Mayor, just as a matter of procedure, I like the way the committees are working. And on these things, when they come through, I would maybe suggest that we maybe have the comment of what was decided, or what recommendation came out of committee.
Oh, yes, yes, yes. Okay, so in the committee, all of these were...
Come with Public Works Committee approval. I can add that to each one.
Yes.
Thanks. We used to do that years ago. Thanks for reminding me.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you. Okay. Got a motion and second, right? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Okay, item number C is bio-solid screw press project. Is there a motion and second for approval?
So moved.
Moved by Lalum, second by Manti. Okay, Mike?
Bids were opened at 2:00 PM on Tuesday, January 23rd, for these bio solids de-watering improvements. Five bids were received. We had a nice range of, 8% of the low bid was the range of the five bids, about $85,550. The low bid from Swanburg Construction of Valley City in North Dakota was determined to be complete, and the design engineers, H.R. Green, recommended awarding this bid to Swanburg Construction, in the amount of $1,063,000. Here, we are not awarding the alternative A, a telemetry computer software update, as we're budgeting to replace that computer next year. So we'll have new hardware with a new operating system, whereas the current computer has an old XP operating system. And so by getting the new operating system next year, we'll be sure and get the latest version of the telemetry software next year.
Okay, thank you. And this received the recommendation of the Public Works Committee.
Yes.
Are there any questions or discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number eight is consideration of bids received for the solid waste department. And all of these items, as recommended by the department.
Yes.
Were recommended by the Public Works Committee. So the first is the automated truck chassis?
Yes. Two bids were received for the automated truck chassis. The low bid, without trade, meets the specifications. Actually, both of these bids did meet the specifications. The low bid is from Allstate Peterbilt of Fargo, North Dakota, in the amount of $124,585. We recommend awarding this bid to Allstate Peterbilt, in the amount of $124,858 without trade. We will be taking the trade-in on the body bid, because it results in an overall lower cost for the total truck, of the two components.
Okay, I'll look for a motion and second.
Motion.
Motion by Y, second by Roby. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item B, automated truck body. Is there a motion and second for approval? Moved by Vilhauer.
Second.
Second by Thorson. Okay, Mike?
Thank you. Five bids were received for the automated truck body. The two lowest bids did not meet the specifications. The low bid that did, does meet the specifications is from sanitation products for the curb tender body. We have four curb tenders in our fleet of eight trucks. This bid was the amount of $116,733, less a trade-in value of $22,000, for a net bid price for the body of $94,733. And we'd recommend awarding that.
Yep. Are there any question or discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item C, 95-gallon waste containers. Is there a motion and second for approval? Moved by Albertson, second by Y. Go ahead, Mike?
Five bids were received for the 95-gallon containers, and the low bid did not meet the specifications. The second lowest bid from Northern Truck Equipment of Sioux Falls did meet the specifications. That bids in the amount of $50.88 per container, and we would recommend awarding this bid to Northern Truck Equipment, in the amount of $50.88 per container delivered. And this is for the Cascade Container, a container we have purchased multiple times over the years.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? Lalum?
Mike, is that, is that the blue one? Is that what that is, the garbage?
It's going to be all three colors. It's going to be about 950 containers, and of the blue ones, the solid waste, will be 450 of those. There will be 275 green yard waste containers, and 225 of those beige single-stream recycling containers.
How does that compare to our last bid?
The last bid last year was lower, at $47.69, and I think these are tied to oil prices made out of petroleum.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item D is a four-by-four pickup truck. Is there a motion and second? Moved by Manti, second by Vilhauer. All right, Mike?
Okay. One bid was received for the three-quarter ton crew cab four-wheel-drive pickup truck for the landfill. The bid meets the specifications. It's from Watertown Ford Chrysler, in the amount of $29,184 without trade. The used unit will go to the fire department. And we compared this to the state bid. The state bid did not have a long box. It had a short box, and that bid was $109 higher than our local bid here for the long box. So we're confident we have a good price on this truck. It's the same truck we bought two of last year from Watertown Ford, and this price is $291 more than what we paid for that truck last year.
Okay, any questions or comments? Councilman Lalum?
Not to put you on the spot, Mike, do you know what the fire department's going to use that for?
Oh, I don't remember. I know that Chief Krantz approached me, and he had a need for it. He came out and looked at it, and thought that the used unit was perfect for what they wanted it for, but I don't remember what it was for. Sorry.
Yep.
Anything else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Mike. Item number nine is authorization for the mayor to sign a revised intergovernmental contract with South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance. And I will look for a motion and second. Moved by Roby, second by Thorson, and we will let Kristin tell us about this.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Attached to the agenda is a revised intergovernmental contract with South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance. The last contract that we signed with them was in 1991. There's just a couple of changes to the contract. All the members received a letter, and I kind of broke down what the changes are. When South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance began in 1987, the net position was divided into two different funds. One was to cover the administration costs, and the other was to cover the claims. There's no longer a need for the split, so the distinction between the two is being eliminated. The other change that they noted in their kind of cover letter to us is, kind of deals with the board of directors. The board is comprised of fellow Public Assurance Alliance members, as well as the executive director of the municipal league, and the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners. Those two positions did not have a vote before, and now they will have full voting rights. So it's kind of administrative changes to the contract, but that's what it is. So I'm seeking, or I'm requesting approval and authorization for the mayor to sign.
Any questions or comments? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Kristin. Item number 10 is authorization for the mayor to sign a property purchase and development agreement between the city of Watertown and the Watertown Development Company. We have Watertown Development Company representatives here. Chris, I'm spacing out your last name.
Shilkin.
Shilkin, sorry. Chris Shilkin. Michelle Koczek. I got it right at the finance committee. Okay, so this agreement that's in the packet has no red lines in it. This is an agreement that a similar one was approved in 2016 for purchase of land, raw land, adjacent to industrial land in the city, for the purpose of a future industrial park. And if we could show, I think the map's in there on the end. We, the council had approved this in 2016, and then discovered that there was a blanket easement across the whole thing, which killed the deal. So there was a pipeline existing, and an easement was retained next to the pipeline, so that freed up the rest of the property for development. The pipeline easement did isolate the north corners of the property, so they aren't included, and neither is the land with the easement on it for the pipeline. So the remaining land is smaller, so the price tag is smaller as well. And this has already been annexed and zoned industrial. So are there any questions? Or Michelle, do you want to fill us in on details? The price?
To add on to the mayor's comments on this, the price that we originally were going to pay was $18,000 an acre. That has been reduced to $17,500 an acre, and a reduction in acres to the original 80-some acres, to, in the area of around 75, is what we'll be purchasing.
Okay, are there any questions? Councilman Vilhauer?
First of all, this was discussed and recommend approval at the finance committee meeting earlier. But I want to also clarify, so it doesn't look like we're jumping the gun here. This actually isn't a property purchase agreement, and this is just our agreement with the development company, so that'll be a separate document coming before us with the... company, so that'll be a separate document coming before us with the, with the seller.
Actually, this is the development agreement that allows us to proceed with the purchase, because the development company will actually be the owner of record.
Okay.
On here, we're gonna just have a slight, pay a little bit more, and we'll have 50.1% ownership. We'll pay taxes on the land, and the city will have ownership of 49.9. This is the agreement that'll help us govern that land, basically, and the development of it.
Will the city sign the purchase agreement? So should that be part of the motion to authorize signature of the purchase agreement?
The city will not sign a purchase agreement on it. The development company would sign the purchase agreement with the seller.
Councilman Danforth?
Do we, do we own the land, the little triangle on, well, would be along, what is that, 30, 29th, I think it is? Do we own the land north of that?
The city owns the land north of that.
Okay, why wouldn't we, why would we not take those two smaller pieces, those two triangle pieces? Even with the, the easement there, why wouldn't we do that to create continuity with the land we own, and to control the development of those lands?
We had actually, in one of the, during the negotiations with the seller, we had actually asked to include those two pieces on there. Originally, we didn't, and then we went back and said, yeah, why don't we just take the whole thing, because of the continuity issue there? And then an option on the easement area, because we wanted to make sure that we weren't taking on any risk of whatever happened, would happen if there were a disaster with that pipe. So in the process of the negotiation, the seller pulled back on those two triangles. There are some farm leases in that area. I don't know if that's the motivation, but at this time, she's chosen not to relinquish ownership of those.
What do we prefer? I mean, 'cause really, to have those two little triangles separating two pieces of our land seems odd to me, to not know what's gonna go in there and to have control of that.
And I would agree. That was a concern of ours as well, and I don't know if that's something where, you know, if we go back later as a development company to negotiate that, or if that is something, since it's adjacent to land that's already owned by the city, if that's something the city wanted to pursue at any point.
Right, and that easement area has, is very heavily restricted. We couldn't even build a road on it.
That's okay, but we have access other than that.
Right.
You got 29th, and you have all the land above it that we would have.
Yep.
You reset that little lower left-hand corner square, or for 90-degree angle, and we've got access to all that land. It just seems very odd that we would want those two parcels of land separating two pieces of our land.
Yeah. Councilman Roby?
Follow-up to Mike's question. First of all, timing on this, this is something we want to do quickly?
This has been kind of drawn out for a long time, due to the discovery of that blanket easement and the time it took to reduce that. So we would like to, we would like to get this going. We have had some interest in this park. That's a pretty good, pretty good prospect for it, so we want to be able to move.
I'm sorry, could we throw in an option on those two?
We could. You know, we could go back and try to renegotiate that. We did actually have an option for the easement on there, which was to just give us a year to try and see if there was any risk to ownership of that. But they, when the seller came back on the counter, they said just the area below the easement.
Councilman Vilhauer?
Not necessarily an option, I want to write a first refusal on it.
That's something that we could, we could go back to the seller and ask if we would be allowed that.
Couldn't hurt to try.
We know what's happening up with those little, whatever those little things are up there in the, I mean, that's, that's being mined, right?
The triangles?
Yeah. Up in the very center part, isn't that the mined area?
Yeah, where it's the little diagram there.
And I would hate to see that become a part of any part of that.
Other comments or questions? Need a motion? Is that what you're gonna say?
No, I had a comment.
Kristen?
I did just want to point out that this purchase, I know it was kind of approved in 2016, but there is no budget for the purchase. So just so everybody's aware and on the same page, that with the approval of this, later on in the year, I will ask to supplement the budget for the purchase. And it will be coming out of Fund 212. We do have that little bit of restricted cash set aside for land purchases, and I did go back and listen to the meeting in 2016, and that was what was discussed to use. And so I'd kind of like that to be in the motion as well, to use the restricted cash.
Use the restricted cash?
Well, Mayor, if you wouldn't, that was gonna be my next question, Kristen, is where this is budgeted at. So earlier, we had talked of supplementing the rifle range by $75,000 out of the 212 fund. Now you've got almost $600,000 here. At what point does, does the 212 fund just not support, or, I mean, we can keep thinking the 212 funds there, but at some point, it's not.
The one difference with this purchase would be that the restricted cash for the land is $868,500, and that truly is restricted. The other portion would come out of your unreserved fund balance. So you're correct in the statement that eventually, yeah, we need to be careful of the unreserved, but for this land purchase, it is its own restricted portion.
Other questions or comments? Okay, I would like to look for a motion to approve this using restricted cash for the purchase, and to ask for an option, or right of first refusal for the rest of it, that, do you want to include the easement areas, or just the triangle?
Just the triangle.
Just the triangles? Someone willing to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Moved by Lalum, second by Manti. Any further discussion? Councilman Roby?
Just the way it was phrased, is that limit what they can do? In other words, if they don't do the first refusal, then this motion is null and void?
Oh, no, that wasn't my intention, but-
I wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, let's, how can we clarify that? Matt, would you like to try and say that?
I believe the intent with the motion, but I don't know if it came across in the language, is yes, to prove this, but ask for first read refusal, but we can go ahead without it.
Yes, if we, yes, thank you. If she says no, we'll keep going. All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, item number 11 is authorization for the mayor to sign an engineering contract with Infrastructure Design Group for the Marina Bay Drive Bank Restoration Project Number 1812. Look for a motion and second for approval? Moved by Roby, second by Vilhauer. Shane?
Thank you, Mayor. Pete, you want to put my screen up on the board again? We discussed this at the Public Works Committee meeting earlier tonight. The scope of the engineering services is to repair this area right along Marina Bay Drive, which has seen some erosion and slumped into the bay. The scope of the work is to restore that bank, armor it such that it won't slough again, and potentially look at the extension or enhancement of the guardrail. And the engineer will assist with all permits regarding the Corps of Engineers. So look forward to having them work with us on getting this problem fixed.
And the contract amount is?
Not to exceed $6,000.
$6,000, so. Is there, let's see, I already got motion second. Any questions or discussion?
Is this just simply to state what it's gonna do, what we need to do to fix it?
Yes, this is design. Councilman Albertson?
Question for Shane on this. Is, is there any chance that that road could be gone over? You know, the situation that came up with the owner out there, that he's taking care of the grass and all that stuff along there. Is, is there an option there to help that situation out with that landowner out there? Or is this not the time to even talk about it, maybe, but if you're going to be looking at that? You know, the city owns the land to the north there, a few feet, and then there's a garage deal up there, too, so.
I guess the owner could approach the city, see if there's a willingness for, I mean, we, this is kind of a unique situation. We all maintain the boulevards in front of our homes, and essentially, this whole triangle is part of that boulevard. So, you know, I mow my boulevard on two sides of my house, most people do. This one's kind of a unique situation, in that it's larger and more of an irregular shape. But technically, either one of these property owners would be responsible for the maintenance of a boulevard.
That's not really germane to this project, but, I mean, it is-
I didn't know if the road, if anything could be, I don't know. I know that, I know it was- Heartburn for the fellow that used to own it. He doesn't own it anymore, as to who should mow it, and it's long, and I don't think the property owner to the north ever did, and that's probably his boulevard then, but, I don't know, maybe it emoted if this guy wouldn't have. Anyway, forget it. It's not it.
It's okay, Dan. It is unique, and there's two property owners that could have to have divvy over who mows it, and only one's doing it, so that is unique. All right, so I have a motion and second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number 12 is consideration of engineering contract amendment with H.R. Green, Inc., to include construction, management, and observation services for the wastewater treatment facility Biosolids Dewatering Improvements Project Number 1715. Mike?
Thank you. This amendment is for $101,000. It is the amount that was budgeted for this, these construction services. Again, as mentioned, it's construction, observation, and administration. And I guess the actual cost will depend upon the time, the number of hours the engineer spent on the project, you know, they bill by their hourly rate for the different individuals. And so this is what we've budgeted for, so we'd ask for your approval.
All right, is there a motion second for approval?
So moved.
Moved by Lalum, second by Vilhauer? Any further discussion? This had the recommendation-
Sorry about that, yes.
-of the Public Works Committee. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number 13 is consideration of change order number one to the contract with PKG Contracting, Inc., for the wastewater treatment facility Primary Digestor Rehabilitation Project Number 1612, increasing the contract $7,735.84. This also received the recommendation of the Public Works Committee.
Correct.
And I would look for a motion and second for approval? Moved by Danforth? Second by Roby. Okay, Mike?
Okay. In addition to the cost of $7,735.84, the change order added eight days to the contract. A couple different things were achieved with this change order. First of all, the cost of the change order, the total cost, in five of the eight days, was for fixing the metal cover, as they jacked that up in the air to get it out of the concrete tank, so that they could sandblast it, prepare it, repair metal, and then coat it. It was out of round and rubbing, so they had to apply, basically reshape it, made it fit back down in the concrete tank without rubbing, or they would be scraping off the brand-new coating that's being installed to protect the metal from rusting out over time. And then the additional three days, the contractor felt that they were held up by the engineer. After the metal was sandblasted, they found additional damage that required the engineer send out their structural engineer to look at these defects, determine which ones had to be repaired, and what kind of repair had to be done, and that took three days. So that's the other three days of this change order.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? Councilman Lalum?
Is that, are they powder coating that, Mike? How are they painting that?
No, it's sprayed.
Just spray paint?
This is, I forget the exact diameter, but this tank's about 50-foot in diameter, so this cover is a 50-foot in diameter, diameter metal cover, that they, they can't powder coat it, I don't think. They spray it up, they sandblast it, so it's called white sandblasting to perfectly clean metal, and then they put a certain thickness of coatings on it, layer after layer, till they meet a certain mill thickness.
There's an epoxy, it's an epoxy-
Yes.
...compound, so it actually goes through a chemical reaction, and gets harder than a standard paint.
How long is that supposed to last?
The last time it lasted, what, 30 years?
20.
Okay, so.
Councilman Roby?
Point of interest, and I'm begging for the short answer. How does a digester get out of round?
You know, it may have been out of round when they slipped it in the first time. Because there are, there is pressure relief and vacuum relief on that structure, so it shouldn't be gas pressure. So it either had been lowered into, it would have lowered into place, perhaps. It occurred then, probably.
Is it in the horizontal or in the vertical?
Out of round. Got me there.
Oh, okay. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Thanks, Mike. Item number 14 is old business, and we passed on an assessment update from the Public Works Committee, and maybe Shane can give us an update there.
All right. Pete, will you put my screen up again? Two potential assessment projects that we sent out petitions to the adjoining properties looking for interest. One of them is 25th Street Southwest. This is Worthington Tractor Parts here along the west side. Co-op has this large property to the east, and then several local residential properties. We received almost unanimous feedback from the people, even if they wanted it, they said it was more than they were willing to pay for the assessment. So in essence, there was no support for continuing on with the project, so I'm planning on that process just dying with the petition not being signed or supported by the local properties. Not that their issues are going away, they still would like the city to consider possible dust abatement, or, you know, other maintenance. And if, if at some point in time, the city decides to approach the assessment process a little bit differently, we might instill some interest there as well. But right now, I'm looking at that project not going forward. We'll have to regroup on, on how we would approach something there, if at all, in the future. 21st Street Southwest was the other one, two property owners. There's Evolution Sports and the sales by, Sheen, there you go. I wanted to say a different name, but they also do not support the project at the cost at this time. They did allude to the, when the rest of 21st Street was paved, that there was some buy-in or city agreement with the local property owners to the south. I'm trying to investigate what the nature of that conversation may have been. Haven't gotten all the details, and that's been quite a long time ago, and I don't think there's much, there's probably records deep, deeply filed away, but I haven't gotten to them yet.
To do what? They, the property owners to the south had to do an assessment project in the past? Or they weren't?
I believe, this was talked, I'm sorry, Shane, if I can jump in here, but if you go back in time, and I, it was before my time here, but we have talked about this a few years ago. It's my understanding, and I would tell you, Shane, that that wasn't supported by documents, by memory, that when that development went in down there and the road went in, that there was an agreement for those people that that street would be finished.
Right.
On behalf, yeah, to the, to the highway.
Right, and whether that-
And I believe it was-
Right, well, I guess what the discussion is, was that at the sole expense of the rest of the property owners, or was there some other cost-sharing agreement? And that's what I'm trying to- what I'm trying to figure out, if that ever was committed to. And I, I haven't found anything concrete yet, but we'll, we're gonna make sure that we at least look at all the discussion.
Councilman Roby?
I'll bring my question up to about 50,000 feet. The bigger issue, we are inconsistent with how we assess streets. And we just talked about one in the earlier where there were some curb and gutter, and some people that already have curb and gutter, of course, won't be assessed, because they were assessed previously. So those that don't have curb and gutter will get the assessment. In this instance, you know, back, back up, if you own property in the city, you assume the responsibility goes at that property. And we've had some issues with alleyways and things you want to do, and, you know, they'll pick winners and losers issue kind of keeps coming up. In this instance, I would just ask the basic question. If we're gonna pave those streets, why don't we assess them like we assess every other street, every other landowner? Where's our consistency?
He's not planning to pave this unless they agree to pay for it. So this isn't a project that's going to happen, is what Shane's saying.
Right. I'm trying to follow our process.
I know, Shane, that wasn't, I wasn't coming down on you, but I also, I heard loud and clear, but Mike said, for some reason, I seem to remember something about that, that were agreements to do that street, and if we do that street, if and when, that should be assessed equally.
Correct. And, and just to make sure that we're all understand, assessments projects can be initiated by the council in the city and brought through to the completion. You can't, and I hate to use the word, force or enforce the assessment onto properties, but at some point, if the reluctance of the adjoining properties doesn't result in a fruition of a roadway, there might be some, at some point in time where the community has to step in and say, "We need a road here." And what, what those steps are, we need to
Councilman Lawlum?
At least discuss.
Where, where does the asphalt stop on that road? Can you show that to me, Shane?
Which road? 21st?
21st, yes.
21st, it ends right here, and then it's a gap up to the approach to the highway. So I'll zoom in on it here.
So in other words, they already had their assessments and paid in everyone else to the south.
The other ones.
To the south, correct.
To the south, yeah.
Yep, that's true.
Right.
They're the ones asking for this to be-
The rest of it to be done?
Yes, the rest of it to be done. The, it's not the property owners that have the gravel road that want it paved, it's the people that have to use it to get to their paved road.
Right.
And it is a mess.
Yeah.
That road is really a mess.
Okay, and in fairness, one other way the city's been trying to gain traction on these, some period since I've been here, Evolution Sports did a building permit modification. And as part of that process, we had them sign a waiver of rights protest. Unfortunately, that waiver of rights protest was tied to if a building got built over on the east side, that also triggered a waiver of rights protest, then that would put them both on the hook to build this road. But I don't know if I can even predict when, if ever, a building would be necessary on the east side of this road. Not, not in the near future, let's put it that way.
Councilman Danforth?
Going back several years on this same topic, and I would caution us on, in general speaking, general terms, of accepting the liability and responsibility for the cost of putting these roads in. If you, the discussion that took place a couple years ago involved this road specifically, and at that time, if this was the only road we had like this in town, it'd be an easy decision, we move on. If you get to the south side of where Shopko is, that whole development area is gravel. So we got two landowners here that say they don't want it, so the city makes the decision to go ahead and pave it.
But we would have said.
Potentially.
But would that potential-
Potentially. If that's the case, then, and I'm a landowner, south of Shopko, why am I gonna agree to do anything unless it gets mandated on me? And that, it's risky for us to do that. So for us to accept responsibility of it, I'm going back to Shane's comment. Sooner or later, sometimes we just have to make decisions to do it. Well, if I have a business south of Shopko, I'm just gonna keep putting it off, putting it off, putting it off, putting it off, and then, geez, the city will put it in. So I'm very fearful of that, just simply because we have not one incident, we have quite a number of incidents around. We got one John up in your area off of 14th Avenue, that's still undone today. So I would, I would very, be very cautious in that direction.
Anyone else want to add to this? There, there's no action being requested at this time. Just an update. Is there any other old business? Oh, okay.
Sorry, excuse me. One more part of the assessment. I do expect this alley, this is the Wheel Inn, Highway 20 or 10th Street, 9th Street, we believe that this alley, it has 50, I have 53% support for that project right now with one vote that we haven't heard from, and he signed the petition the previous time to this, so I fully expect this project may come forward for an assessment, and I'll just update you as that comes to fruition.
Okay. Any other old business? Councilman Vilhauer?
It's been alluded to a couple different times tonight, but I want to emphasize, Shane, you and I were at the meeting when the bike trail was discussed by the design team that's been working on this. I want to, I know the public's aware that we're working on this, but this is good, this is not going to happen anytime soon. Hopefully, we'll have a plan in place, and Shane, jump in any time if I misspeak here. Hopefully, we'll have a plan in place by the end of the summer, maybe even have some small stretches done, but, you know, due to, you know, needing to acquire land, apply for funding, et cetera, this project is, is not going to get done this summer like some people may have the idea, because they know that we've got a design team working on it.
Yeah, it's just the planning that's getting done.
Right, yeah. I will say that-
So we can budget.
The entire plan will be done this year, and if we see some low-hanging fruit with, that are easy stretches that we wouldn't want to go out for, I'll call it outside funding, or grants, or something like that, we, there may be a small project that would come out of it, but nothing big planned for 2018.
Alright, Councilman.
Yeah, sure. I want to go back to the agenda on just a couple items tonight, just primarily the consent agenda, and then also just some verbiage here, but throughout our agenda tonight, we have many uses of the term contract, agreement, and contract agreement. I think we need to be consistent. My assumption is they're all the same. They're all contracts we're dealing with. But to be honest, I don't know that. We do use all three of those terms, and my assumption is, actually, they are contracts. And I think we need to be, if they're not, that's okay then, to use different terms, but if they are contracts, then we should be using a singular term, meaning a consistent term in our-
Which one would you like us to use?
I don't care which one we use, we just need to be consistent. If it's a contract, it's a contract.
Well, and some people provide us with a form that says agreement at the top, and some people provide us with a form that says contract at the top. It means the same thing, and it, it's, both would require authorization for signature. We, we need to keep a little bit of flexibility. If we adopt one of those words, we're gonna be faced with having to get approval for something provided to us that uses a different word to mean the same thing.
What do you need approval on from the council? What's the basis? Based on the word, or based on the intent and the use of the contract?
Oh, the intent.
Okay, that's what's gonna drive it, whether we need the approval or not, not the name of it. I'm saying for consistency purposes for the public.
Right, but what I'm saying is, we don't always write them. They come to us for-
So that's how we're doing that, that we're using their word in this case?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Second thing is, in the past, it's my understanding anyway, that we, any time that we have had grant requests come to the council, they've always come to the council and not been on the consent agenda. Tonight, we had three of them on the consent agenda. Is that something that has changed for some reason?
I think it's probably just an effort to speed things along in routine, or items that aren't controversial in nature. Kristen would be-
The only thing I could say is, recently, I can't, I don't know for sure how long, but for the most part, when they're doing the application for the grant, that's been on the consent agenda, but when they're actually seeking approval to accept the grant, that usually comes more on the actual agenda.
And what did we have tonight?
These were just applications.
Right, that's the application, to apply.
To apply for it, not, and like I said, once they receive it, then it would come back to the full-
What we've done in the past, Kristen, is, we don't want to apply for it if the council doesn't approve it, because some of these come with city contributions, and some come with not immediate contributions, but they come with terms that we may or may not agree with. And I'll go back, we had a number of years ago where, I can't remember what the grant was called, but it was for the fire department, and we got a, a fireman, fireperson for two or three years, and then we had to fund a year or two, or whatever years it was after the fact. We need to know those things going into it, because tonight, we get no detail in here to know whether I should object to that or not, because there are some other situations that, or terms that we should be aware of in the application process. That's where it really comes down to, is do we get it or not? So, always been told, don't apply if you're not gonna take it. Then, the other one is, on some of these, we have some in our consent agenda for agreeing to contracts, but yet, we have contracts that are on our agenda, not in the consent agenda. For example, number 11 was the engineering services. Where's the decision made, whether it goes into the consent agenda, or whether it comes off and is in the standard agenda?
Well, that was my decision. I, that one could have easily been a consent agenda, the, the one that was on the council agenda for action, easily, $6,000. That could have been on the consent agenda.
Yeah, I'm just looking at, when I see them in the consent agenda, and I see others in the standard agenda, I'm just curious as to why we are both-
I would like to tell you what this is, just so you know.
Okay.
And I wouldn't have if it been on the consent.
Okay. The last question I have is in regards to the transfer of vehicles. When we budget a line item for a new vehicle, let's just use the pickup that we voted on tonight, most of the time, we don't know whether that's going to be traded in or not traded in, so we go on just what the, the cost is, per se. So who has the say whether a vehicle ultimately gets traded in, or whether it gets transferred, and if it gets transferred, has that been covered within the budget process? So for example, the one that's gonna go to the fire department, did they budget for that, or is that something that, and who approved that to go? Is that, is that the chief that makes that decision?
Okay, I'll try to answer the couple questions. Normally, we do not expect a trade-in on any of our vehicles as far as cars, pickups, any of that. It's kind of been our process to ask any of the other departments that don't always get new vehicles if they need them. The only time that we would get to the point is to basically sell them during our surplus auction. So you'll probably never see a basic car pickup type vehicle with a trade-in for the bidding process, because we try to pass them down to the other departments that don't have as big of a budget to get equipment as often. As far as that, it's kind of been, when the vehicles are coming up, when the departments know they have a budget to buy a new one, the departments that say need a vehicle, they will kind of talk amongst themselves, and it'll be determined who has the most need for the hand-me-down vehicle. And like I said, once they've kind of met their full life, they'll go to the surplus auction.
If, do they budget for those vehicles then, within their system?
As far as the trade, or the-
No. I'm Chief Krantz, I'm getting a pickup. Did I budget for that pickup that was at the, the waste site? Did I budget for that?
There would be no budget, because it has no cost. It's a transfer between departments. Most of the, most of these pieces of equipment have fully depreciated themselves.
So there's no operating cost insurance, or anything that goes with it?
No, so most of it is just a simple transfer among the departments.
It's an extra vehicle, so there would be extra maintenance and that sort of thing that would be covered under the blanket budget line item for those.
Yeah, a good example is, I've gotten a police vehicle in the last year, but then my vehicle then got declared surplus and sold at the auction, or transferred to another department. So the, the vehicles just kind of trickle down through our system until one lands in the surplus and gets sold. That's, that's kind of how it's been, it's a matter of attrition.
Yeah, I agree with the process. Trying to understand how it's covered approval-wise and budget-wise, because, you know, because in theory, is that what we agreed to tonight when, when it was said it was gonna be transferred to this? So in no part, our vote was the approval of that transfer, right?
Right.
Okay, alright.
Okay. Is there any other old business? Under new business, I, we were talking about whether or not to allow storm ponds in floodplains, and that was a discussion at the Public Works Committee that felt like it could use a little more airtime, and a little bit uncomfortable. But the basic question is, should we allow the pond requirement to be met in a floodplain? And if so, are there any restrictions on the recurrence level of allowing a pond? And here's another question that we didn't really talk about. Does it make a difference if it's going to be a city-owned and maintained pond, or if it's going to be a developer-owned and maintained pond? Because either way, it isn't gonna function at times when it's in the floodplain. But furthermore, it might be damaged significantly periodically, causing increased maintenance cost, if it's allowed in the floodplain. So there's some pretty basic questions there. Councilman Roby?
You sparked a question with me, and you said developer-owned pond. I, I'm not sure how that would work, because I think once the developer sells anything that's out, then who owns the pond?
The next landowner. It runs with the land.
Okay, so if it's a centralized regional holding facility, who's gonna own that?
Well, that's, that's why we've allowed regional ponds, and-
And who owns that? Is it like an association type of thing?
Yes, if, yes. And they typically don't have much maintenance requirements, and they, you know, if we, we have the right to inspect them, and if we find a problem, we could ask that they fix it, and it would be at the property owner's expense.
And, and I've been in an association where we had a holding pond, and that was our property. We all shared in the ownership and maintenance of that. In the instance here, though, and I'm glad you brought, you made that point, is, it sounds like we're taking ownership of this regional pond versus-
Yes.
Okay, so why wouldn't it stay as a part of the development and spread out amongst all the landowners?
Because there are numerous landowners tributary to it, that would, you might have six or eight different landowners that aren't connected by any organization.
Okay, that, that makes sense. That's, that makes sense to me. Alright, so it's not gonna stay with the development, because any time a developer leaves, you look at covenants. Once the developer leaves, it's up to the landowners to do it, and then it becomes, you know, self-enforcement, and that creates a lot of conflict. So I, I'm gonna reiterate my concern I made at the committee meeting, that is that when, well, not if, it sounds like probably when, at some point, it has a problem. If the city took ownership of that, and I will be long gone when that happens, I'm sure, the council is gonna look at this and go, "Why do we allow a, a, a structure to be built that was insufficient?"
Sarah, am I correct in saying, when we had our discussion earlier, you said, "This is not a flood control device, it is a water quality device."
Yes.
Which, to me, is a little bit different in regards to its function, right? Because, quite honestly, if it's gonna get washed away, that, that little bit of water is in this area, no matter how big it is in the whole scheme of things, if it doesn't function, it's pretty minor. It, but it needs- It, but it needs to get repaired.
It's not a flood control device, which would, you know, have, you, you would care more about
Right.
the effect downstream if it's affecting life and limb as opposed to aesthetics or water quality or something that's.
Well, to me, I think that's an important discussion, period. But, because the functionality of it, if it's flood control, is a whole different issue to me than it is if it's just water control. You get into a flood environment or situation, it's not going to function properly anywhere, that little bit of water, if it goes away, it's not going to matter. But, I go back and on, maybe that's the thinking that you're, you're going down, is why do we accept any of that? Why doesn't it just stay with the development? They work out their plans and how they divvy up responsibility and participation. It's needed for that whole development, whether they are directly associated with it or not, in order for that development to go through. So, why does the city accept that responsibility at, in any manner?
It's to encourage economic development. The pond maintenance is theoretically pretty minor. But, this is where I throw up the flag, when it's in a floodplain. Because a normal pond outside of the floodplain, really, is very minimal. You have to maintain the weeds, we're not going to do that. It'll be whoever's out there is doing that. We would be responsible for cleaning it out every few years if we have to. And, you know, a couple hours of labor. Maybe replace, we've never really had to on any of our ponds, go in and replace outlet works, because they've never gotten to the point of needing maintenance. They aren't things that get used regularly, like a road that wears out. But I just, I have a real problem with the whole philosophical idea of putting this pond in a floodplain and then taking the risk as a community over. And that's, you know, that's why we've brought it to you, Councilwoman Lallum.
Where do we allow construction to be built? What, what level, 100-year flood zone? I know you can build in 500-years flood zone.
You can build in a floodplain, but if you're residential, you have to elevate above, a foot above the base flood elevation. If you're commercial or industrial, you have to elevate or you have the option of floodproofing.
Yeah, but what level, is it the 100-year flood?
100-year.
So, why would we let anyone build below the 100-year?
Well, these aren't, yeah, it's a.
I understand that, but they're still building a pond.
It's a.
Or a holding retaining area. So, to me, it makes no sense to allow them to do something that we don't allow someone else to do, simply for the ease of use or the ease of cost.
We, we have extensive floodplains in our community. And if we restrict ponds to not be able to be built in floodplains, that could create a potential hardship. This particular one that we're agonizing over could be moved away from the creek. They've got plenty of land there, it's just, they'd rather have a building on it than a pond.
Yeah, everyone would, I mean. When you put in a subdivision, they make them whole retaining ponds. I mean, we just did the one north of 14th, that has extensive ones.
We take those over. There's, I mean, you're not going to spread that over 50 different people.
I understand.
And those are flood-sized.
Okay.
Well, Mayor, I'm in agreement with you on, I, I struggle with taking on the liability for the city, you know, 10 years, 20 years, whatever that number is. I just, it, it seems illogical for us to take on that liability when it's not a typical wear item, like a road.
So, are you okay allowing the pond to be built in a floodplain, knowing that at times it won't function because it will be flooded from the other water source?
I am if it's not our property. If they retain ownership, I'm fine with it. I'm not if we retain ownership.
Councilwoman Albertson?
One of the things that comes back always is it's about water quality. That, you know, and we all need to be concerned about that. Now, I don't know at what level that we take responsibility for this. But, water quality certainly has to be in all of our, all of our thoughts when we have something like this.
It does, and I think that I'd be remiss to not point out that larger communities are today required to meet discharge standards for stormwater. We are not, because we're smaller, but someday, we might be.
Well, we're, we have a lot of water.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. Even though we're smaller, we also have to take into consideration that we have a lot of water here. And so, I think that, that does make a difference. And I think I'm on the same page as those of you on each side of me, is that I really would be uncomfortable with something that would be built in the floodplain. In this particular case, if we ask the developer, you know, now we're going to that whole thing about, you know, development throughout the community and all the different areas where we have floodplains, and some of you who are more involved in construction can probably pitch into this a little more. So, we require this developer to move the stormwater pond, right? The storm, so, we do that, and then we take it over. But we're a little more comfortable with that, because it's out of the floodplain. There is going to be developments where even if they moved the pond, they can't get it out of the floodplain.
Right, right.
So, I think is that where you're saying is kind of the rub in terms of development versus protecting the water quality? So, so that's, or, or just the fact that if we maintain them, we may be putting a new one in every five years, or 10 years, or 20 years? Are we, so, are we hobbling development? Or are we actually, I, I'm wondering if developers are as skittish as, as we think they are, or are they? I mean, I don't know. You know, if, if we are saying, you know, we want the quality of the community and the quality of your project, and whether you keep it or we take it on as a city, are they, and we say, now, these are our requirements, because we want to protect the city, and we want to protect the water, and all those other things, are they really so skittish that they're going to stop developing? I mean, I, I'm just asking, I don't know.
That's, that's a very good question. That's kind of what they're saying is at stake. You, I mean, they, they want us to facilitate development, and we want to facilitate development, but where do we draw the line? Right, Councilwoman Lallum?
I would ask, I mean, I want to facilitate development as well, but at what point do we worry about the health of our individuals versus the development of our community? I mean, if we're a 100-year flood zone, and this is mostly for water retention and removal of, I would assume oils and stuff like that coming off of the parking lots, correct? So, do we want that going into, I mean, if you have a 100-year event, and you have a 100-year event, there's nothing you can do to stop that. But if you're in a 10-year, I mean, that, that's just, I mean, I, I think it's irresponsible of us as a community to make that choice and say that, yeah, every 10 years, this is going to potentially drop into it.
So, at what point does it become, okay, it's kind of reasonable, 50? It's in the floodplain, but, yeah.
I'm personally at the 100 myself.
2% chance a year, what?
I'm personally at the 100 myself.
So, outside the floodplain?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Roby?
I, as I sit here and listen to this discussion, I feel like we're getting in the position of insurer. In other words, we are going to ensure against an event which is highly likely in this area. We have a lot of water coming north to south around here. We've had bad events in the past. I just, I, again, I feel like we're being put in the position of we have to ensure against that, and it doesn't seem to ring well with me.
I hear you.
Okay, I'm not trying to make this technical, because I don't want it to be, but think of this too. Okay, we're not uncomfortable with anything that's at or above the 100-year flood elevation. But in order to convey drainage out of any development, parking lot, street, those pipes are below ground. And so, your outlet, whether that's into a pond, into a stream, into anything, is 99% of the time going to be below the 100-year flood event. I have a storm sewer in my neighborhood that outlets to the river. If that's not sealed off at the river or sandbagged, the water can get to me. And I'm four blocks away. So, the question of where your facilities lie, likelihood that a substantial portion of them are at least going to lie underneath the flood elevation.
Here's the thing, though, Shane, you live in an old neighborhood where no one considers.
Right, correct, that's, that's a unique difference.
These aren't required in old neighborhoods.
Right, right.
These are in newly developed areas where frankly, people should not develop in floodplains if they can avoid it. We, we shouldn't be planning to fill up a floodplain and elevate everybody four feet. That, that's kind of irresponsible. We should let the water go by itself away from a inhabitants.
Right, and the only reason I brought that up is that if, we kid ourselves if the, we think that the discussion stops at the line that's drawn on a map for 100-year floodplain. Because our outlets definitely have to get out of there.
Well, I, I think it's a good question to ask. Go ahead, Councilwoman Vilar.
I think in this particular development, I think what the, what the developer's going to end up doing is going with the individual, individual ponds, which, you know, the consensus here was maybe that's not all bad. And I'm not sure what the developer necessarily said about that. But, what, what have we done now as far as, I mean, are we going to be crossing this bridge every time we have a development someplace else? Or are we now saying that we're, that we're going to dig our heels in and not assume responsibility? I mean, what are we doing for future, for other developments?
Well, I will say, for water quality ponds, it's not commonly done for communities to take over regional water quality ponds. Those are normally done onsite, building by building. Each site has its own water quality facility. They're much smaller than flood ponds. They can be incorporated into landscaping, and they usually are. And it's, I think that we're generous in allowing a regional pond. We, we have always allowed regional flood ponds to be taken over by the city. And mo, I don't think we have any private flood ponds in any, any neighborhoods. Those are bigger, they are down in the creek, they flood, and it's a safety issue. They, they, we don't have those all over the place. We've got them isolated and manageable. And because there is a public safety element to a flood pond, it's appropriate that we maintain it, so we know that it's maintained. Because if we don't maintain it and it washes out, safety is at risk. You can't say that about a water quality feature. Those are generally so small that if they wash out, it's, you know, it just looks bad on the property owner. And it, you know, maybe gets the street muddy, but it's not going to hurt anybody. It's not going to flood a house out. So, they, they are, I mean, we're stretching it here by having regional facilities. Where they, they posed the question to the engineering staff, this is the first time that I'm aware of, that that's ever been done. And it's in this East Park development, Morris Edition, up there. They, they're having to build these facilities, and they asked if we would consider taking over a regional facility for water quality. You can't do that everywhere. If, if you have open channels leading to it, it doesn't work. Because the pond is supposed to protect the open channel from erosion. So, that makes no sense to put it downstream of the thing it's supposed to protect. But in this case, it's all piped and hard surface to get to this point. And so, from that perspective, you know, yeah, well, if it facilitates development, sure, we will entertain that thought. And I looked at the plans and saw, it's inundated. Every 10 to 15 years, it's underwater of Willow Creek. And, and so, that's where I kind of go, okay, straight face test here. Is this really appropriate? Maybe we're going too far saying that we will help you out by providing a regional pond that we will then take over ownership of. And, and I think that's what I'm hearing from you. Is that you don't want that. You don't want that added liability. It's not a public safety issue. It's a potential ongoing expense for the taxpayers.
Sarah, do we, do we encourage regional pond development? Or do we discourage? But for this purpose, for clean water?
I mean, we haven't, no, in general, and like I said, the purpose of a water quality facility is to catch the pollutants before it's in a raging stream. You want them to be all over the place, small. They function better that way. Bigger ones mean higher flow. It's more difficult to remove the pollutants from larger volumes of water. You can incorporate them where the flow is small. It's only one building and the parking lot draining to it. That's a tiny amount of water, it's not moving that fast because it's a small volume. And so, it's easier for the pollutants to filter out into a small facility. The blades of grass are much greater in comparison to those grains than they are if you put a whole big giant development toward it. So, it is a paradigm shift in thinking from flood control to water quality. They're at opposite extremes. And regional water quality facilities, that's not a foregone conclusion that we would accept that, that's a new concept. This is really the first time we've been asked. It's, you know, we haven't been doing them that long, though. I mean, we've been doing detention ponds for flood control for decades, and 50 years maybe. But, we've only been doing water quality facilities since 2008, when they were federally mandated. So, those are the questions. And I, I would like to be able to give this developer an answer from the council. I mean, if, if Shane Waterman tells him, I'm sorry, we're not going to take a regional pond on as a liability to the city himself, he would be attacked for being, throwing up roadblocks to development. And, you know, slowing things down and making it hard on the developers. I don't want the staff to be at the brunt of that kind of criticism. This is a community question. This is a community question. What do we want to allow? What are we willing to give? What are willing, what are we willing as a community to take on as responsibility and liability? You are the representatives of the community. This is not an engineering question. This is really a philosophical question for the community to answer. And, I mean, the engineers know about it, we've designed them. We can advise you what they look like, what happens, what we can expect. But ultimately, should we take on this responsibility, or should we not, is a community question.
I would be opposed to that. They'll call me throwing up a roadblock, but I would be opposed to the community taking over a storm retention, a regional retention, water quality pond. We have, what, 30 units? And we get water for two or three days in a few small areas, and it filters through and we're done. And, and it's individual units, each have them. And there, I see it happen, and it works very well. And we don't need a big regional storm control thing.
Right, well, it's, it's better that way from a water quality perspective. Ultimately, you get a better result with local water quality facilities than you do from regional water quality facilities. So.
Are we clarifying enough for the community too, the difference between regional and local? Meaning, local meaning on individual lot?
Yes, each individual has its own.
Right, and then regional being a subdivision?
Yes, would have, yeah.
So that people don't think regional?
Right, and in residential developments, where we have, in most residential developments, a detention requirement for the 100-year event. And that's a big pond. The water quality facility is incorporated within the boundaries of the flood control. pond, and it's a minor part of it. So, that's a, that's a no-brainer that we would accept that because it's part of the construction.
Can you put in perspective on, when you say it's local to that property, was it an acre or two acre, and how much of that acre is it, is required? Is it just small? Is it a little swale? Can you put that in perspective?
Yeah, like a percent of the lot size. There, there isn't, I don't-
Ma- Mayor, do you wanna, we'll talk about the two that are out in that region if you want, just specifically. There's a water quality pond by Hobby Lobby, right here. And this little pond right here is for Eighth Ave. And I'll be honest with you, Eighth Avenue is what a potential buyer didn't like, that pond being on that property. And is what spurred this to go, well, if you want that pond to go away, it has to be redone somewhere else. That's how this all started originally. This little pond here, somebody that was looking at that lot didn't want it.
But that little pond would have been considered a local.
Correct.
That's not a regional.
Nope, that's a local.
Nor is the one for Hobby Lobby. That's also a local.
Correct.
Retention pond, because that's not trying to take in all the stormwater from that entire area.
Correct.
It's for the single lot.
It's for the single lot. But when you start talking for a regional, you're talking a much bigger pond and you're talking a much larger area. And now, in this case, we're talking about it additionally being in a floodplain. And those three factors together for me don't work as, for a taxpayer, from a taxpayer
It sounds like the answer to, let's turn on a floodplain for this Shane. If they wanna have a regional pond and they own it and maintain it, we're okay with that. If they want us to own it and maintain it, either move it out of the floodplain, or maybe So, if, if they do it themselves, let's talk about the recurrence level. Do we care that it's inundated periodically? And, and ceases to function periodically because of the proximity to the greater water body?
That was going to be my, are we, is that a hypocritical statement? You know, in the sense of, we won't take it on if it's in the floodplain, but because of, because of the reasons of destroy, you know, water quality and, you know, inundated and just coming apart and, um, all the negatives, but we're okay with it being located and having all those negative things happen if somebody else owns it.
We can, we have the requirement, they have to sign that they will maintain it in perpetuity. And so, it's an enforcement issue. Councilman Roby?
That kinda goes back to the point I made earlier. I didn't, I don't know a development where the developer stuck around. And I don't see that, I say it objectively, not in a bad way. It's just that they develop, they sell the parcel out, they sell off, and they're done. And I don't know if I was a developer, wouldn't wanna maintain that in perpetuity. I wouldn't wanna do that.
It would go, it would be attached to a land.
Okay, so now you're back to, you're gonna have to develop an association.
Either that, or let the developer encumber one property. And, and the developer's gonna go away someday, so they probably don't care. It would be one property that it resides upon, most likely. That makes the most sense. It's like hot potato. Who gets it? Everybody gets the benefit of it.
The development I lived in, and this, this was in Minneapolis, it was the only undeveloped, undeveloped piece of land in South Minneapolis. They put a townhome association there, twenty units, some duplexes, some patio homes. They took a quarter of that land. They dug it down. They created a retaining pond. It was for flood control, but also water quality. And that was part of the association, was shared equally amongst the association. I don't know if that would work here. The commercial development, that sounds kinda-
Was it all one owner?
Uh, the developer, yes. It was a one or, one-owner developer.
I, I would think that would be very difficult with, like, if it's one thing if you have a one big condo building with ten units, that it's all part of the same building. You're, is that what it was?
There were, no, a combination of duplexes and sing, and just patio homes.
Oh, okay.
There was, you know, twenty units in total, about, uh, probably fourteen buildings, fourteen separate structures.
And if they're in that close proximity and they're all like a neighborhood, I guess that would be a little different than this case where these are all gonna be completely independent. But I don't think it's impossible to put that response, I mean, it would be hard to manage probably.
Excuse me, if I bought a lot on the corner of, you know, Seventh and Eighth of wherever you want, and I built a new home, wouldn't I be required to, I would not be required to have something that would hold my?
Not on an individual's single family home lot. You would not, you would not be large enough to trigger the requirement.
Okay. So, I just wanted to make it clear if that was, so, because when Glenn was talking-
One acre on an impervious surface triggers the requirement.
Okay, 'cause that's what, when Glenn was saying the individual ones, I, excuse me, how big it would have to be to one acre.
What would this pond look like? Would it be elevated with berms around it, or would it be down in the ground?
Well, there, there's some buildup to, to make it level.
Isn't the goal, though, with floodplanes is to keep water moving and keep things out of the floodplain? Why would we wanna build something up when we've been, we've been talking about taking out trestles and taking things out and removing berms and trees and everything else to have water flow?
We would do that to encourage economic development. But yes, you're, you're absolutely correct. It seems counterintuitive.
And I, I go back to how much economic development are we going to squelch by not having our community start to be bermed and turned and, you know, start undoing what we've already been trying to do to improve and preserve our water quality and make this again, you know, a water-friendly place. Like John said, we're, we're taking things out and making it more. And, and are, are we truly gonna thwart development if we're looking at it from a perspective of, hey developer, we want you to have your development in a really nice city. We call this Watertown, and we want our water to be really cool and clean and great. So, develop here, but play our game and make sure you're gonna be clean and happy and, you know. That, that's, that's what I'm still thinking, is that I don't know that we're gonna immediately thwart development because we say, nope, we're not gonna take over a regional retention pond for stormwater. Every developer's not gonna run away tomorrow. Maybe I'm wrong. I hope no, no developers run away, please, but-
Well, I think it's reasonable to say that if there's a regional flood control detention pond, or detention to the hundred-year level, that we would take over as a regional flood control facility. If it had a water quality facility as if part of it, we would take that over as well because it's all designed within the same footprint. This isn't the case. Don?
Uh, in attempt to summarize, uh, I am not an engineer. I'm not a hydrologist. But here, the, the choice I think that's been presented to us is, the normal way of doing things is they'll have retention on lots. Fair? Okay, that's for water quality. We're not talking flood control. I think that was a good distinction to make. So, the choice is, do we do it the way we normally do, which doesn't seem to be too threatening to the city? Or do we do it this way we haven't done it before? I can appreciate the idea, and I can appreciate the requests coming forward, but it assigns to me a meaningful amount of risk to the city.
That's accurate.
You know, a few years ago, when, when the decision on where to put the police department was made, um, or we were going through that process, and, and the, the site out east was looked at. The, the city had bought some of that land, but I don't know if I, I'm assuming it was mined at some point. And there was some thought of filling some of that in. And there was a lot of discussion about not doing that because of its purpose for flood control. So, John's point is very, very valid. Why would we build a structure, albeit dirt and clay and whatever it is, within a floodway or a floodplain, or whatever the term is?
Well, storm, just as to make things go down.
You see what I'm saying? I said that there was a lot of discussion within this community. I see Mike out here. Mike was part of that discussion. And, but then now we're gonna take a look and say, now, we're not really talking one instance here, folks. We're talking potentially several. We don't know. And now we're gonna allow-
This is gonna come up again and again. Because Willow Creek watershed is undeveloped. And we will have future floodplanes in our community too that come up. Councilman Roby?
Again, when I get in this situation where I'm not the expert, which is quite often, I need to simplify in terms I can understand. And the terms I understand is, if they do the flood control per each individual property, it works. It might work if we do it the other way. I, I, I don't wanna prohibit or inhibit development, but I believe it assigns a meaningful amount of risk to the city, which I'm quite uncomfortable with at this point.
So, water quality facilities and floodplanes should be owned by the developer and run with the land, not with the community responsible for them?
But then I go back to the question, why do we let somebody build something that's an obstruction for water flow in a floodplain when we spend thousands and millions of dollars of removing things from floodplanes?
Right, but if, if you wanna start saying we shouldn't allow development in floodplanes in Watertown, that's a, that's a huge statement. We have broad floodplanes. And they aren't all critical carrying capacity. A lot of them are just low areas adjacent that don't have moving water in them at all. And we should allow people to fill there. It won't, we've, I mean-
This, this one in particular happens, we read along a fast flowing-
This one is along a, a stream, yes. This one's next to a stream. That's different.
What the mayor's saying is, and I just zoomed over to it real quick, the new theater is in a floodplain. And we're gonna allow, with the right methods of bringing those buildings out and, I mean, you know, fill, those are gonna get, those areas are gonna get developed. Otherwise, all of this shaded pink is never gonna develop. Right? Is that what, I mean, we have to be able to allow responsible-
I'm not suggesting that we don't allow development in floodplanes.
Right, right, correct.
I'm just suggesting that we do it with thought.
Right, correct.
And consider the ramifications of what we're allowing.
Right, right, and that's my point. We, we can't, we can't say absolutely nothing's gonna happen on the floodplain because we own too much and can get responsible development with the right engineering and methods, so.
Are we talking about two different things in the same conversation though? Are we talking about water quality and flood and construction and floodplain, and are we talking about storm retention? Or are they interrelated?
Well, they're related. There will be times when someone has to do a flood detention pond and also a water quality feature. And those are generally combined, almost always. So, if they're doing a regional pond for a neighborhood, for instance, we would wanna take that over and it will have a water quality feature in it. And we'd take that over too, because it's part of it. It's part of the flood control structure. Adam?
What are you looking from us? Do you want us to say that we don't want it? I mean, do you want me to make a motion?
Uh, you don't have to make a motion. I, I just, it does, I'm sensing general agreement that it's inappropriate to have regional water quality facilities, maybe period, and, and I mean, and particularly in a floodplain. And so, um, let them do their water quality facilities onsite, and just like we've expected. And I, I will tell you, that's only been a requirement in Watertown since two thousand eight, but it's been a requirement since nineteen ninety-one in the larger communities. And, and I worked in a larger community. And it was not allowed. There was no such thing as a regional water quality facility. And, um, water quality facilities did not go in floodplanes. That's a different community. Flood ponds did go in floodplanes. But that's also, we're not saying you can't do that here.
From a liability standpoint, I don't think that we should have a regional, I mean, then you have to fence it off. You have to maintain it. You have to, if it's deep enough, depending on what you're using it for. So, I personally would not recommend that.
Glenn?
I, Shane, you, you've reached out to a number of communities. I, I agree with the consensus. Mayor, you tried to put me on the spot last week at our, at our meeting, and my last comment was, I'm a strong believer in the collective wisdom of a group, and I, I definitely abide by that. But I guess, uh, so, so I'll agree with what I'm hearing. But Shane, you have reached out to other communities. I guess I would still like to know what, you know, how, you know, how they're dealing with similar situations like this, uh, if you can follow up or, you know, get some response from-
That would be good, and I think we should, um, bring back a revision to our manual to the council for adoption. That's something the council adopted in the first place. And so, if we revise it to clarify this, we would bring that back for, for formal council action at that time. For now, so that we're not holding this developer up, we should give them an answer. And, and does anybody disagree that the answer is, if you wanna build it in the floodplain, it's yours? Otherwise, take it out. I mean, I, we don't want a regional water quality facility.
Mayor, personally, I, I mean, I, I know where that's going. I would still, through our process, would wanna vet what's a reasonable, even if it's private.
Okay, even if they're owning it, at what recurrence level should we allow in the floodplain?
Yep, I think that should be vetted out regardless, because that's, otherwise, we're gonna be forcing somebody else to fix their pond every other year, or every ten years, or what. So, still a buy-in, the city should still define what we want or don't want.
So, if they decide to do this, what recurrence level?
Right.
Are we comfortable with? And, and is anybody comfortable with a ten-year? Is, is anybody uncomfortable with a ten-year, um, recurrence level? That means you're uncomfortable. People are uncomfortable with that. Are you uncomfortable with a twenty-five-year recurrence level? Seeing some nodding, more comfortable, but maybe not still comfortable?
Comfortable in the sense that I, I know we're taking on less risk. It doesn't avoid the risk though, because in the circumstances where it gets taken out in twenty-five years, we fix it, two years later, it happens again, which we know could happen.
But it would be they. It would be they.
Okay, under them, okay, if we're not responsible for it, I just, I, I think you're gonna have a, I don't know how you assign in perpetuity the liability coverage to somebody who's out of the project. The developer's gonna have to own that in perpetuity.
No, it'll run with the land.
Okay, so they're gonna spread it out in the association type of-
No, not necessarily. Whoever owns the hot potato.
All right, I'm getting down into granular details there, but okay, I see where you're going.
Yeah, so, is twenty-five okay for a private facility? Who is against twenty-five? Who is against 25?
My, you know, my concern is, is what are, to what degree are we worried about, A, the water quality being disrupted every, whatever it is, whatever that amount is? But secondly, is, again, going back to John's point, is, when you have a need for an open flow of water, and this gets built in, I don't care if it's a 10, or 25, or 50, or 100, at some point, it's gonna have an impact on your flow of water, if it's built there, correct? So the question is, do you want any of that?
Well, we, we don't restrict development in the floodway fringe. Now, I, I will say, I don't think any of you would be okay putting this in the floodway, which is the part of the floodplain that we reserve, and we don't allow obstructions in the floodway. The floodway is where the faster-moving waters go. Part of this pond was proposed in the floodway, just a part of it. And I, I think that's a bad idea, and I don't think any of you disagree with that. So, we'd at least have them move it out of the floodway completely. Then we're in the floodway fringe, which we do allow houses in the floodway fringe, we allow buildings, roads, everything in the floodway fringe. Adam?
What's the level of, is that 25-year?
100-year.
100-year?
Yeah, I mean, we, you have, you can build there, but you have to elevate or floodproof to the 100-year recurrence level.
Do we allow anything to be done in something less than 100-year?
Yes, I mean-
If we are, then like, then-
Playground, um-
Well, so do we allow roads to go into a 25-year plain?
Roads go in the 100-year floodplain.
Right.
They don't go in the floodway, they shouldn't.
Okay, but if they're out of the floodway, do they go in, you asked about a 25-year, do we put roads in 25-year?
She's asking about the floodway, though.
No, the floodplain, the floodway, we shouldn't be obstructing the floodway, no matter what.
Right.
The floodway fringe, which is the floodplain outside of the floodway, we allow complete, utter, you can build whatever you want in-
Then we should allow this, then. Because it would be no different than, whatever our rules are for what we do allow, at what point, that's the point at which this should be allowed.
So then it becomes a question of functioning, and at what recurrence level are you okay with this failing because it's inundated?
Does that map, show the floodway?
Yes, it's hard to see here. There's two, there's two yellow lights, that's, that one where the hand is.
That's the floodway, and the flood fringe is everything out to here. Right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Councilman Roby?
That begs the question of enforcement. So if it gets wiped out, then there's gonna be inspection, there's gonna be enforcement, and then, has it been done adequately? Is that an issue we should consider?
Oh, yeah. I mean, it's, the more of these that we get, the more burden it is upon the organization to keep track, make sure they're not filled in. You know, I had the fun duty in a previous community of going out and locating all the storm ponds in a watershed. And out of, like, 35 of them, only one hand were still there. Everybody had filled them in, they had, you know-
Now, that, that goes back to, nobody wants to pay an assessment, right? I think that's gonna be extremely hard to enforce, because if something a council decision made, you know, 25 years ago, I think that's gonna be an issue. I wanna reiterate one other thing. You said, Sarah, that, you know, I'm always curious what other communities are doing, but nobody of a certain size of city allows regional flood-
No, I think people do allow water quality. I think it's not in Watertown, it's nothing we've done before. I, I wouldn't say that it's not done elsewhere. I, I have never worked in a community that allowed it, but I bet there are communities that allow it.
Okay, so I'll back, ask the question, what does Aberdeen do? What does Brookings do?
I don't know.
We heard from Aberdeen, we did not hear from Brookings.
About whether they allow regional water quality facilities?
Okay, I'll, I'll read this, almost verbatim. This is from engineering department in Aberdeen. "The individual we contacted has been there for over 20 years, and he can't think of a case where it has been requested. But if it was requested, they would allow it and ask for some documentation on how it would function in case of a flood. It would have to meet their design standards and be designed in order to create storage without being affected by the floodplain."
Well-
Yeah, not both of them.
Well, I mean, armoring techniques would depend on how the discharge is designed, and if there's a lift station involved, and, I mean, there's lots of factors here. But they didn't say that they wouldn't outright allow it, they said if they did allow it, it would reach a high scrutiny. But, that's, that's my interpretation of what he's saying.
Chris, do you have some experience with these facilities elsewhere? Wanna come up to the microphone?
I would say I'm not an engineer.
Come up to the microphone. Because there's an audience out there in TV land watching you right now.
Not an engineer, but have lived in two communities that experienced flooding quite often, mine it being big flood, and Devil's Lake, of course, was flooding year after year with the lake. So different type of flooding, you know, lake flooding, river flooding. When you looked at, when they went to develop commercial property in Devil's Lake on the east side of town, there was a new Walmart, couple restaurants, two hotels, a truck stop. There is a large water-holding facility that's ripraped and owned by the city. So, it was designed city specs, definitely in the floodplain, so was the highway and the roads. And of course, when that went through, all of a sudden, you see tens of millions of dollars of investment going into that area. How the agreements were made, I don't know, but we could certainly contact the city attorneys for mine, or the city engineers for mine it and Devil's Lake and find out. Different state, there's probably some different rules and laws and regulations, but for the most part, the designs were rock riprap, large facilities, and development went right around them, no problem.
And it, those were likely flood pond, flood ponds with water quality facilities incorporated within?
They were all floodplain, never developed before, so when Walmart wanted to build, they built out of the floodplain, and you can see the elevation drop where their pond is at, which is right along the highway. You know, you pull in, it's landscape like I think you guys have been talking about, and it definitely spurred development in that area, allowing those ponds, for lack of a better word.
And, and this particular area of town, we're trying to get the water out, we don't require flood detention right here, in this location where this developer is.
And sometimes they're empty, of course, you know, there's sometimes no water in them, just depends on rain, runoff, what's happening, so.
Shane, are you feeling comfortable? If they wanna continue on with this pond in the floodplain, we would, anyone object to allowing them to do their own facility that they would maintain with a 25-year recurrence level?
I think somehow we need to get someone with a little bit of knowledge in this area to give specifications. This is what they need to do. This is what materials they should use, this is how they should make it. I don't think we should just let them-
No, we have, that's all covered in our manual.
We do have.
We just don't tell them the design criteria of inundation recurrence, how often it floods, and then doesn't work because it's flooded.
Okay.
We don't address that. But we do talk about stabilization and, done?
Might agree to something like that, as long as there is some sort of, you know, forfeiture of right to protest down the road, kinda thing. I think it's gonna be an enforcement issue when, when the event happens, and especially if it happens, you know, two years after it happened the first time. I think it's, that, that, to me, is a concern. And, you know, like you said, people fill stuff in over the years, things forget, you know, we rotate councils and people out of here all the time. That's a concern.
Okay, so, you know what you're gonna tell them?
I think there, I'll probably tell them that we didn't come to a consensus on elevation, that maybe-
But we don't wanna own it.
No, that, yes, that we're clearly not gonna own it. That will be the number one thing to take away. I think they would be willing to go back to the individual water quality facilities on each lot. But this question won't go away that easily, so we do need to put some more research into it, I think.
Right, well, and I think that putting the water quality facility on your high-visibility corner, instead of on the low end of the back, is not, not really very good forethought. And this, this owner who is requesting that that pond be moved, I don't blame him. Why did we do that? We did that just to hurry up and comply, and there wasn't a lot of creativity, with, probably with the thinking, they can move it if they don't like it.
Right. We have some tasteful, in my opinion, tasteful water quality facilities just down the road on 29th Street, that, you know, they look like grass lawn, and they function quite well. But, again, that's a different, slightly different area, but most of the properties drain to the roads, so that's why they, these facilities do kinda tend to find their way to the front, and unfortunately, if they're not done tastefully, they look like an ice war.
Okay.
So, I mean, in Minnesota, a lot of these things are wet-bottomed, you know, but we're not doing them that way here.
All right, well, I think we've beaten this one.
Yes, we have.
So, is there any way to set up some type of a district, somewhat like our urban renewal district downtown, where we would use that to generate revenue to maintain a regional pond?
For who? For the city to maintain it?
That the city would own, but we would generate some type of revenue, whether it be a property tax, whether it be some kind of-
Well, we could do a stormwater utility. We're one of the few, maybe the only, class-one communities in South Dakota that do not have a stormwater utility.
So why don't, why couldn't we have a district out in that area that would pay for that regional detention pond? Maybe, maybe we don't generate any revenue off it to start with, but we have-
Well, that would be an owner's association, if, if they're going to maintain it. If, if we're gonna take it over-
That's what I mean. The city would take it over, but it would, it would give us the ability to kick in that stormwater tax, or whatever it would be, in case that thing did get flooded out, maintenance, or whatever.
Well, we could, we could form something like that, but I, I think it would, I don't know that these property owners would be interested in taxing their future owners.
I think that's a legal tax question, a legal question. The Urban Renewal Board, we have authority to do that because the state gave us authority to do that. Is, I don't think the state, I don't think we can create a tax without approval from the state, I think.
Well, true, yeah. A utility, we could, but how we break it up, yeah, I mean, a utility would-
And quite honestly, that, I know it's a whole separate issue, but that's been talked of for quite a while, and probably should come off the sideburner and get looked at, because it would become then a charge on your utility bill, correct? Just a small charge that would come off whatever it is, I don't know, the number is relatively small, but-
But is this an add, is this really a, a smart use of dollars? I mean, there are other things that we could do with money generated from, this isn't the first thing I'd jump to. We've got erosion problems and washouts, and those sort of things that we've already, we've got a mile-long list of drainage issues that we don't take care of.
But it would, the only thing is, it would be, the developer would build it, and we would just take it over as a city, but that would give us the potential to, if we had to maintain it or repair it down the line, we'd have a revenue source to do that. We may never have to do it.
Mm-hmm. That, that goes back to the question of, you know, what risk? How, how, how close to the stream, what recurrence level of inundation are we comfortable with? So, I would like to move on.
I, yeah, I was gonna say, I think we just need to, I think there's some consensus, excuse me.
Think there's enough consensus for what to tell the developer, for now? And then there's a lot of other things that need to be talked about and looked at to put in revisions in the manual, correct?
Yeah, and you know what? We don't need to reinvent any wheels.
Exactly, so-
We haven't done extensive research to find out what other communities do.
Right. We'll, we'll get the research done and come back with a recommendation sometime.
Okay, very good. Is there any other new business? All right. Are there any liaison member reports? We do have a reason to go into executive session tonight, in order to consult with legal counsel, and so I would like to have a motion to move into executive session.
Mayor, could I, could I ask a question?
Sure.
You've been talking about floodplain all along, and I've got a customer that started to repair some damage on his home. He had a fire in it, and he's repairing the damage. Nothing on the outside of this home is damaged, it's all on the interior. He's below the floodplain, but so are about nine of his neighbors, because they're all at the same level. And our city engineer tells him that he cannot fix his house, because he's below the floodplain, and so-
If he's in a floodway, Mike?
Yeah.
That is not your city engineer, that is your federal government telling you that.
But he's not changing anything.
Doesn't matter.
So he can't fix his house?
If it's in a floodway and there's substantial damage, it cannot be rebuilt. Those are federal regulations, everybody in this nation has to comply with.
What is substantial damage? There's nothing done to the exterior of this house.
That-
There's a little bit done in the one room of the house, and so he's gotta, he's gotta abandon his house and leave it sat there?
It has to do with the value of the home and the cost of the improvement, and that also, that's set up by the federal government. That's not Watertown being mean.
So all of the broke people in West Watertown that are in the floodplain or the flood area-
In the floodway.
Floodway. Now, this ain't, this ain't a floodway, but-
Well, we, we don't have, and was that the city engineer or the building official that?
It was most likely the building official.
That's who it was. They told him he couldn't rebuild his, it burned in where the water heater is on his house, but what I'm saying is-
That could be our regulations, is it mobile home?
Yes.
That, I mean-
And I went through all of the ordinances that I could find, and I couldn't find one that said he couldn't fix his house back up.
You know what? I'd, I'd be happy to address that with you later, and I, I mean-
Okay, I just wanted to bring it up, because we're not gonna die there. This guy's got a, he's, he's not a rich guy, so he's not gonna go out and buy, build a new house. He's gonna stay in his old trailer house.
I'd wanna see all the facts. I'd wanna see what the facts are.
Yeah.
We don't wanna do anything that's unreasonable, but the building official can't be making up his own rules either. If we have a rule that, we can bring that and discuss it, but we need to have the facts.
Okay, that's all I was, because you've been talking about floodway, and this guy's in the flood area, but he's not in the floodplain, I mean, you know, we're next to a river or anything, he's way back away from it, and so.
It's probably more of a mobile home rule. Because we do have mobile home rules.
I tried to find it, but I couldn't find it in the ordinances, so, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
I appreciate it, thank you, guys.
Okay, is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Moved by Y, second by Lala. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Was opposed? Okay, we are in executive session.